All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's meeting of the -- actually, we're going to start with the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for December 15th, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
President.
Board Member Nanki?
Sir.
Board Member Claussen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Rogers?
Present.
Board Member Benars?
I did that.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. All right. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We need an approval for our special meeting of the agency this evening. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency.
Second. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Tesler to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. It's now time for public comment on issues having to do with the Urban Renewal Agency. I don't see anyone signed up. Was there anyone in the audience that came to speak at this moment? Okay, there are none. We'll move to the consent calendar. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Tesler, to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Member Tesler.
I wish to take note of an important fact that was revealed to me, and the fact that was revealed to me is that this is Mr. Wells' last meeting. Is that correct? And I would like to publicly acknowledge John Wells for his absolutely spectacular leadership and the things that John has done for the city over his pretty long and varied career, and how much I've enjoyed working with you on projects. And you've been a steady hand on the tiller, Mr. Wells, and you will be missed, extremely missed. And I hope that you go walking in Minto Brown every day with your smaller dog, and you enjoy everything that you enjoy, and just take it easy, and do everything that feels good to you. So, wish you the best of luck.
That's very --
... Good to know. Thank you very much. I'm very honored to have been able to serve in this position for all these years and to work with all of you. I've learned a lot and very grateful for the opportunity and for this wonderful staff and the leadership of the city. It wasn't an easy decision, but I think it's the right decision, and thank you.
All right. Other comments? All right. Thank you very much for that. We're going -- we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have no information reports and no unfinished business or new business, so the Urban Renewal Agency will be adjourned. I'll now call to order this evening's meeting for the Salem City Council for December 15th, 2014, and this is a special meeting. And so, would our recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
President.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Counselor Clem?
Here.
And Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. And we do need an approval of special meeting agenda. Member Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Salem City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And I see we also have approval of additions and deletions to the agenda, and -- over here, let's see. So Counselor Bennett, I need a motion for that as well, please.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we now have time for counsel and city manager comment. Do counselors have comment this evening?
Mayor Peterson.
Yes, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, this afternoon, I had the opportunity to have an encounter with one of our parking enforcement officers.
Uh-oh.
And I just wanted to say, one, he did -- he educated me on the error of my ways, and it was -- he was very courteous, very helpful, and also indicated to me that downtown businesses are really happy with the changes, at least what he has heard as he's out on the street. So, I just really appreciated his courtesy and his feedback, because it's very insightful. He's, you know, these are the people that are on the ground enforcing the things that we have put in place. And so, anyway, I just wanted to mention that and appreciated his courtesy to me. And actually, I mean, this is what we want. We want education. You know, when we put in new rules and things, we want to educate the public. It's not necessarily just to punish them for not following our rules, so just wanted to mention that, and --
We got to go.
Yeah. For next time, right.
And we appreciate your contribution to the city coffers, yes, of course. Other comments? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you.
And then Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the opportunity last week to read the Mayor's proclamation for Speak Up Salem, Salem Speak Up, and attend that event. I really want to recommend it to counselors in the future if you have an opportunity. It was a really excellent program. It included a real focus on homelessness, particularly on youth homelessness. And I thought the discussion, the presentations, the whole thing was both disturbing and hopeful. And that's a lot of what you can ask for from these. I just thought it was really quite a good event. It was attended by the city manager and the chief of police, as well as myself, and the deputy chief, and another guy in uniform. I don't know who he was exactly.
Keith Blair.
But it was really -- it was really quite good, and it was very well-attended. The place was full. It was held at First Methodist Downtown and was really quite good.
Wonderful. That's great. Other comments? I have a comment to -- oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Claussen, yes, you are next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if this is time, but tonight's my last meeting, I hope, unless we have an emergency, which I hope we don't. And I just wanted to say thank you to lots of people here. I'm not going to name everybody, but counselors in general. I feel like Brad and some of the other counselors who've been here a while have been very helpful for my time here. Staff has been amazing. City Manager Norris, you've been amazing. So have all the department heads. And to be totally honest, I don't know if I ever had a poor encounter with staff. I've been very happy. Staff has been very responsive when we've needed things on council or when I've had questions about getting more detail, and that's been great. So, I'm happy about it. My five reasons for not running again for council took off because my wife was stressed, so -- So, they're gone, but they came for a little while just to check in and kind of see what it is. And I'm excited. Steve McCoy taking this seat. He'll do a great job, I know, and he's got a lot that he can add to this. So, thank you to everybody, and I've appreciated my time, and I'll stay in touch and maybe do this again at a much later date.
Oh, we're going to make a note of that. Certainly appreciated your service on the council, that's for certain. And we do have a date, I believe, in January when we're actually having a special event. Is that right?
I do, and I want to say January 29.
Is that correct?
Something like that.
That's good. Okay, great. Then we'll officially say goodbye.
Send you on your way.
Yeah, officially send you on your way.
Give you your picture.
Okay. I had the delightful experience of three weeks in India, absolutely fell in love with the country, and on vacation there with my family, and also had the privilege and honor to be able to visit Salem, India. And they welcomed the City of Salem, Oregon, USA with open arms, and we're going to be talking further, because they would like to reinstitute the sister-city relationship that we have, and which is noted on a plaque up there on the wall, which was the reason that sent me halfway around the world, and it's a good reason for celebration. Lot of opportunity there in the relationship. So, we'll be exploring that with people from the community. It's really up to them to decide that sister-city relationship is what they want and want us to support, and same thing on their side of the world, and so that's just a happy note, and there'll be more of a real report that I'll bring to council about the whole experience, which was great.
With slides, right?
No, I'm not going to bore you with it, but I do have some great pictures. I do. Okay, any other comments?
I have one, Mayor.
Yes, all right.
Thank you. I had the annual report on our 1,000-soul program, which is an effort through the city, primarily our recreation staff and then community development staff, working with high schools and middle schools to gather money or donate -- or shoes, new or gently-used shoes, for children in our community who don't have shoes that they can run in and play in. And it started with a need at Holman Elementary School, and now has gone through the high schools, so people can -- who need them can get shoes. And so far, we've had 1,388 new or gently-used shoes donated by people in the community and businesses in the community, $2,910 in cash donations this year, and three high schools and two middle schools have been involved in this program. So, it's just been wonderfully successful and has met a big need in this community. So, I want to thank staff for all their hard work on this project.
Wonderful. That's great. Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Tesler?
So Chuck said that I should probably do this now so we can get out of here at the end. So, this, too, is my last council meeting, and it's -- I was in Cayman Rock the last week, and it was kind of funny, because I was getting ready to go on this dive site, and somebody said, "Are you from Oregon?" Well, somebody I know went to Willamette, and "Did you go over and look at those trees at Christmas time that form a star at the top?" I was like, "Yep." So, see, it was kind of odd to have this conversation with somebody in the middle of the ocean, but that's okay. You know, I -- you know, it's been eight years, and two terms, eight years, many meetings, many late nights, many meetings outside council, many encounters with all kinds of people, and staff has just been absolutely stellar. I, too, can't -- I've had a couple of interesting run-ins with staff, and I've had a couple of people just telling me to calm down and sit down, and that was good. And I can just say that the level of excellence of staff has just been amazing to me, from the top all the way down. The department heads have always been helpful, have always bent over backwards. The staff is just wonderful to help you, and it's just been -- it's been a marvelous time. I know I have been a supreme pain in the tukus. I'll continue to be so on the outside. I'm 100 times scarier on the outside than I am on council. So, but I would say that, just as a note to the new people coming in, this is probably one of the best things that you're ever going to do. It's a lesson in leadership, and it's a lesson in patience, and it's a lesson in humility. And you should remember that this is really what government is about, and this does transcend parties and factions, and, you know, this is why our country is what it is, because we have a participatory government, and we need to participate. And if you're just a spectator, it's not -- it doesn't work. And so, you have to participate, and you've got to play the game and take a black eye now and then, but it's okay. And I would say to the public, you know, remember that we serve without pay. Remember that we put in lots and lots of long hours at this, and we all care very deeply about the city that we serve. And to my fellow counselors, it's been an honor and a privilege to know you. We fought together. We've cried together. We've liked together. We're like a family, like a typical family. And it's just been a tremendous honor to serve, and, you know, I will continue to be involved. I'm going to dive a lot more, though. And it's -- it'll be something I'll probably remember the rest of my life, probably. So, anyway, I'll miss you guys. Happy to be gone. It's a bittersweet thing, but it's been a good time. I have to use the Rolling Stone quote, "What a long, strange trip it's been," but, you know, we'll see. So, anyway, you guys, take care of yourselves. It's important. Thank you for your service, everyone in this room. I mean, really, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Does someone have their hand up?
I have my hand up.
You did?
Did you have a comment?
No.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Been waiting eight years for this. Now, I only came back here for eight months, I think, and I've enjoyed it. Mr. Wells, I complimented you the other day, and you had a hard time taking my compliment, but it was true what I said, and you are a special person, and you brought a lot to this city, and I agree with everything Laura said. And I think the thing that kept me humble all the time I've been in the service of this city is something my father gave me, a little news clipping one time, and I've quoted it here before, but it said something like this, and it's not original. Somebody's famous probably made the quote, but it basically said, "What government gives to one person, they take from somebody else." And I think that's something we have to keep in mind all the time of the services that we provide, that there's nothing free when we're doing government business. It's always costing somebody else. And I've always tried to keep that in mind and to keep me humble. So, I've enjoyed it. I don't -- I hope I'd never do it again, though.
Well, we really appreciated you being willing to come back and participate, and I've been particularly appreciative of the fact that, once you said yes, you've just been in lock, stock, and barrel, and I've really appreciated that. Been great. Just been great. All right, we have time for -- oh, I'm sorry. Did I cut somebody off? Yes, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and fellow counselors and staff. I'll save my comments for our function on January 29th, Thursday night.
Yes.
Wow, Thursday night. Don't know what that's like to meet on a Thursday night. I've 12 years trained to only meet on Monday nights. But it has been an absolute privilege and an honor to be with you fellow council members and staff. Outstanding work. Salem is the best place on earth to live, and it's because of people who step forward like these council members and ones before this, 2000, and great staff. So, I agree with all the comments that have been said, particularly about John and about Linda, and Bob Wells is here tonight, too.
Right over here. Yes, he's right over there.
The guy who trained almost all of us, probably, even Brad, who was here before I was.
And the previous Larry Whacker was my friend in training.
2002 was light-years away. I had kids just graduating from school. Now, I'm proud to say that my family's doing well, and I have 10 grandkids, and so I'm graduating to be a grandpa, which is an absolute delight, in the safest, most beautiful city in the world, and it's because of our great staff and volunteers. And I just want to leave you with the thought that we really do try our best to listen and represent everybody, not only where we live in our wards, but the entire city. And I'm just forever grateful for the privilege of trying to do that the best that I could. So, look forward to friends and staff, as they may be available or want to come, on January 27th, and we'll have some real good hugs and maybe beers afterward.
29th.
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 No, 27th.
Okay.
Of the beer on the 27th.
It's now time for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Looks like we do. Thank you. All right. Lee Coyne, followed by John Mistakawi. Good evening, Mr. Coyne. How are you?
I'm okay, Mayor Anna.
Good.
Fine. Welcome back from India.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of the wonderful people on the council, including the three presumed retirees, Ms. Tesler, Mr. Claussen, and my own Counselor Clem for their service. What I'm about to share with you is, in the vein of respecting Peter Courtney, our Senate President, and this should not be taken as a detriment, I would like to have the council table for one or two meetings, the proposal of naming the Minto Footbridge after him, and my reasons are as follows, and I hope that everybody here is open-minded, will be open to this possibility. I'm very concerned about the ethical conflict of interest question, which is sort of underneath the surface. I see the possibility, and I spoke with others on this, too, that somebody who is an incumbent legislator, as Peter Courtney is, and has a lot of power at his command to bring money to the City of Salem, that naming something for him while he's still in the incumbent office sets up a slippery slope by saying, "We can possibly have a quid pro quo. We named something after somebody, and they will bring money to us." At the same time, it creates the possibility of almost like having a yard sign on the bridge-to-be and saying, it's almost like a tantamount to an endorsement by giving the incumbent extra plus an advantage, although that's secondary to the other thing. My suggestion is that instead, that after Mr. Courtney leaves the office, presumably, by the time the big third bridge is built, knock on wood, that instead that be called a Peter Courtney Crossing, and that would be a much more meaningful public service thank you for him. So, that's the text, that's the reasons, the rationale, and I hope my friend Chuck Bennett is also open to considering that as Plan B, an alternate proposal, so that we avoid the slippery slope of even appearing to anybody in public, that we're doing a favor for somebody that we do revere, but don't want to make it look like we're doing some Mayor Daley fancy footwork. That's all. Please, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counselors? Okay. Thank you very much. John Mistakawi, followed by Kim Snyder.
Good evening. My name is John Mistakawi. I reside at 1761 Cumulus Court Northwest, Salem. Dear Mayor Anna Peterson and members of the city council, I have a very brief letter to endorse Senator Peter Courtney. I'd like to read it. It is with great pride and pleasure to support the naming of the new pedestrian bridge to Minto Island after our beloved Senator Peter Courtney. Senator Courtney is a tireless volunteer and public servant for several decades, just to name a few of his passions. He championed many outstanding causes and sponsored much legislation for strengthening children, families, the environment, physically and mentally challenged people. Senator Courtney volunteered with many nonprofit organizations throughout our communities to benefit the youth and families. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors or comments? All right. Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Kim Snyder, followed by Bob Wells.
My name is Kim Snyder, and I'm from West Salem. Madam Mayor, council men and women, both incoming and outgoing, it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to do what I'm about to do. Never spoke ever before this council. I've been in Salem for 43 years, but I think now is my time. I'm a broken-down, has-been, ex-high-school teacher and wrestling coach. I go back a long ways here in Salem and in various locations throughout the state. I would like to warmly support the naming of the new bridge, the Minto Brown Park Bridge, after Senator Peter Courtney. Let me tell you why. I've taught for the past 20 years behind bars at Hillcrest Youth Correctional Facility here in Salem. Among other subjects, I taught photography, where kids from every part of Oregon were sent to serve out their sentences for crimes committed against the state of Oregon. High school-age young men learn to take breathtaking photos and then do the post-production on Photoshop to express their artistic ideas in the imagery of a photographer. Since they could not leave the campus because of the 12-foot-high fence topped with barbed wire, they were required to find photo subjects within a few feet of the school building. Senator McCourtney heard about our work and asked us to prepare some finished work for display in the public entryway to his office in the Capitol. This interest by the Senate President changed lives, important lives. I will never forget him for installing pride -- excuse me, and self-respect in a number of young men and women in the state of Oregon, hundreds of them. I love to walk Minto Brown every Saturday, and I will love it when the bridge is completed. Peter Courtney, I salute you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Comments? Counselor Tesler?
I saw an installation of art that I think you probably had something to do with downtown. It was mostly young women that were at Hillcrest that did photography, and I don't think there was a dry eye in that house. I don't think that you could not walk and look at those pictures and not feel something. And if you didn't feel something, you weren't a human being, because it was powerful. And when I left there, I had a whole different understanding, and thank you for doing that program there, because I got a peep into people's souls, and it was tremendously, tremendously moving, tremendously.
Thank you for that. And I'm not a politician, but I know a good man when I see one, and I see an opportunity to honor him, and we should. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Clem?
Mr. Schneider, I just -- I think I expressed the sentiments of all the council. I think you do a great job testifying.
Yes.
Come down more often.
Absolutely. I'd like to add, thank you for your service at Hillcrest. It's so important to teach anyone, but teaching behind bars is a special calling, and I've been out there to visit several times, and I really appreciate the work that you've done. Yeah, I really appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Bob Wells has signed up to testify. Nice to see you here. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor and Council. My name is Bob Wells. My address is 940 Sun Miss Court Southeast in Salem. And again, I'd like to echo, thank you very much for all your service to the community. The Minto Brown Project, as you know, is a 40-year dream that's finally coming to fruition, and there's been a lot of people involved in making this project successful. And if you were to put all those names on the bridge, you'd have to make the bridge a lot longer than it currently is designed for. And I look back, you know, mayors over many, many years, starting with Robert Lindsay, and every mayor since Robert Lindsay has done something to move this project forward, including our current Mayor Anna Peterson. Counselors, there's been scores of counselors who have worked on that, including, of course, yourselves. yourselves. You look at volunteers, and when the committees first got started, people like Leo Chafin of PGE, and Malcolm Marsh, and Ken Sherman Jr. were instrumental in getting the projects going, and have led through the years for hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, including those working on it today, like Hazel Patton, and Imo Graziani, and John Gallagher. And then you look at the staff, and I remember as a young staff person, because I was 26 years old when Peter Courtney was elected to the City Council. And Bob Briscoe was the Community Development Director at that time, and we used to go to coffee, and he'd draw on the map the bridge that would eventually go over to Minto Brown Park. And so Bob Moore was the city manager there, and a lot of great staff people have worked on it over the years too, including, you know, your current city manager, Lyndon Norris, John Wales, Peter Fernandez, and a lot of others. But, you know, the one thing that's been constant through all this, the only person who's really been involved in this project for the entire 40 years is Peter Courtney. And he was there on the original Riverfront Downtown Committee, and he has been instrumental in moving this project forward. And I think that, you know, a lot of people think of Peter as being very passionate, and he is. He can be passionate about a lot of issues. But this issue is personal to him. And if you were to talk to him, and you see the light in his eyes when he talks about this bridge, and I don't think this bridge would have been possible without the help he's given it in the last several years. I think it's a testimony to perseverance, that a project can have been, you know, dreamt up 40 years ago, and is finally happening. And I think it's totally appropriate that Peter Courtney be recognized for his contribution to this project, and really, I think, in the end, making it possible for it to move forward. I would add, in a little side note, that I noticed you have a committee that looks at naming parks and bridges and type stuff like that. And you might want to consider, on the Union Street Railroad Bridge, renaming that in honor of Janet Taylor, because she was the one who was instrumental in moving that great piece of the project forward too. But in closing, I would support the resolution that you have on the agenda before you tonight to name it after Peter Courtney, the Minto Brown Island Bridge.
Great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your testimony. Counselors, questions or comments? Okay. And the last person signed up is Paul Alexander.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
And Counsel. Boy, how do you follow that with a negative, huh? Honestly, it's not a negative, and it's more of a positive. I hear what you guys are saying about Peter Courtney, Senator Courtney, and the wonderful work he's done. So I'm not too privy on to council decisions like this, but I read it in the paper this morning, and I was going, boy, you know, one person's name on the bridge. And I walk the park a lot, and I really enjoy it, and I'm looking forward to walking that bridge and over to Minto Brown. But I wrote you a letter this afternoon, just a quick letter. I'll go ahead and read it. Dear Anna Mathiason, Mayor Peterson, and Salem City Council, thank you for your time. I am writing in regards to the naming of the Riverfront Minto Brown Island Parks new bridge. Please consider allowing the public, who have contributed substantial funds towards this project, to be allowed in the process of securing a name for this bridge. This park and new bridge belong to all the people, and all the people of the city of Salem should be involved in naming it. If you feel a need to honor people for this vision, I am sure the list is long, and many people are just as deserving as Peter Courtney. I may have changed my mind after hearing these testimonies, of having their names grace this beautiful and credible addition to our great city. I am curious who the farmers are who donated and sold the land on Minto Island Farm, Minto Brown Island, so that this vision could be fulfilled. They should be honored. I'm curious who first submitted the proposal to the Urban Renewal Committee. Their name should be honored. I'm curious what the names of the hundreds and thousands of people have donated money, petitioned politicians, and sacrificed time to see this project get started. They should be honored. All these people are just as deserving as Peter Courtney of having their names grace some plaque and spoken in every brochure promoting this monumental achievement. I suggest that you give the people of the city of Salem a chance to speak and vote for this name. Personally, I like the idea of a sign that would read something like this, "Minto Brown Bridge, a cherished gift from the people to the people. We hope you find peace and enjoy the beautiful city of Salem and its wonderful riverfront trails," or something like that. Please give the people a chance to input in the naming of this new bridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions or comments from counselors? All right. Thanks for coming down. Thank you so much. All right. It's now time for the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the consent calendar.
I'd like to note, Counselor Nicky will be voting no on 3.2B.
3.2B, okay. Are there other, is there discussion on the motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to, Madam Mayor, the consent calendar includes the naming of the Minto Island Pedestrian Bridge. We've heard talked about over the past few minutes. I looked around the room, and I realized that really only two of us were here when Peter Courtney arrived on the council and began really what is the process that Mr. Wells, I was Mr. Wells, one of my colleagues at Willamette University. I had graduated by then and was sitting up at the, next to the recorder, as the City Hall reporter for the old Capital Journal, and spent, along with my colleague, Ron Blankenbaker, many years covering City Hall. And in the process, had the opportunity to both get to know and observe Peter Courtney and the work he did in behalf of this community. And over the years, I have known Mr. Courtney, Senator Courtney, for, I guess, gash, 40 years now, over 40 years now. I had the opportunity to serve with him in the state legislature. I've had the opportunity to know him over the years and to know his commitment to this project, to the Riverfront Park. His undying, I mean, he is dogged in his work in behalf of the Willamette River. He has been steady as a leader on behalf of this community, and the list, as you heard, can be encyclopedic if you want to go through it. And rather than do that, I just want to assure you that Peter Courtney, quite simply, I think, represents a truly historic person in this community. He's been both a volunteer, city councilman, a member of the state legislature. He is the longest-serving president of the state senate. He will soon be the longest-serving member of the state legislature in the state's history, God willing. And he is an outstanding spokesman for this community. You can go through list after list of the things Peter does that you don't read about, that you don't see him doing. Hearing about the photography program and his support for that was very moving and reminded me again of the kinds of things that Senator Courtney has been involved in over the years. So I'm just very proud that we have decided to proceed with this course of action.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. It's been, let's see, we've got a couple of hands up. Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak to 3.3A, about Lone Oak, or I'm sorry, Kubler in South Salem. Pretty big deal for South Salem to get that expansion of Kubler rolling, and definitely very much in support of this to just kickstart that project. I'm not going to explain the whole thing. It's relatively complicated, but I'm big time in support of this. This has been a big deal for South Salem, and that stack-up is starting to get to be all times of day at this point. So we need to get that moving. We need to get that going. It's just one of those, you know, one of those really busy streets in Salem that's undersized one direction, but good-sized the other direction, which seems very awkward. So I'm excited. I was really happy to see this come on the agenda with this being my last meeting. Feel like I can cast a vote to get that moving, so, sorry, Steve. Anyway, so I'm very much in support of that, and I'm happy to see this moving forward. I hope it takes off.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Tesler.
Just one last comment about Senator Courtney. One thing that I always find very interesting and kind of enduring is that when Senator Courtney talks about his experiences and, you know, how he got to where he is, he always mentions he was on city council.
Yeah.
Always mentions he was on city council, and always makes a point of thanking me, if I'm in the audience, for my service on city council and talking about how important it is. And, you know, he's a very busy person. And I just think that he always speaks to his roots in Salem and his roots starting in this body, and to where he is today. And so I'm going to be supporting that motion absolutely, because I think it's a good thing to do. And to the person that emailed me earlier, the federal government and postage stamps. You have to be officially dead to be on a postage stamp.
Oh.
Okay? You cannot be alive to be on a postage stamp. So there was a question about whether or not that was a law. It's just for postage stamps, from what I understand. And you do have to be deceased to be on a postage stamp. So FYI. And money too, FYI.
All right. Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's unfortunate, and I've said it a number of times at events, that we have to think that people have to be deceased for us to name things after them. I never did understand that. On military posts all over the place, things are named for troops that died. What's absolutely wrong with naming something while they're alive? Because that's extreme respect. Being the city's representative on the regional transportation committees for both federal and state funding, I want to dispel any inclination that somebody has about Peter providing money. Senator Courtney operated, as he always has, in an honorable fashion, and had nothing to do with directly or indirectly, as far as I know, anything having to do with the funding. What I want to highlight here is not, isn't that. It sort of stems from what city manager, former city manager Bob Wells said. There have been 10,000 people that have got this bridge going to be built. And the regional partners, Marion County, School District, Transit District, Polk County, they all came together to prioritize the funding, the last funding piece of 1.6 million, to build this bridge. We wouldn't be talking about naming it if any one of them didn't partner with the city of Salem on regional transportation projects over a long period of time. So I don't credit anybody for getting the money, but it took 10,000 people to get us to this naming, and it took every one of the elected officials who are represented on these transportation boards to step up and say, you know, this is an important regional facility. Kind of hard to do, but it's easy to do when you're connecting three parks and developing the river so that people can enjoy the island and also the river. So this funding issue is a regional one. It's one that was prioritized, but not only us, but all of our neighbors as well. And so as this council moves forward, I hope that they'll remember that this was a labor of love at 10,000 people, plus a half a dozen other elected officials outside of this room. The second point I want to make is that the criteria, and the reason that I support the recommendation, is not because of one person or how long they've been in service. The reality of it is, the vision for this park and this bridge and it then being connected started in Senator Courtney's time. He was a big proponent back then, almost 40 years ago, and he's been a proponent every step of the way. So I have to say that for me, the criterion, the naming of this bridge, is related to who's been the hero from the beginning and who's been a hero all the way to the end. I've only been involved the last 12 years. Miniscule compared to 39 years. So I will tell you that it really is about vision and fulfillment. And I love the idea that we would name Union Street Railroad Bridge. It's hard to write in a monthly article. It's just a long title. I think it would be more appropriate to name for other people who've done great good in this community over 40-plus years. I think of, and God bless him, Mike McLaren, who passed recently, but still living, Mayor Janet Taylor. That, I voted no against that bridge. But then when the council said yes, we need to do it, because Mayor Taylor pushed it, I helped work with the regional partners to get the money for the Union Street Railroad Bridge. So I'm here to tell you that I think of giants like Mike McLaren and Janet Taylor and Jerry Frank. I look forward to this council looking at naming these great facilities for the heroes who've been there at the beginning and have been there at the end. I think of other folks who've done the same thing, and we should look at other facilities in term of naming. So Mayor Janet Taylor, Jerry Frank, Mike McLaren. But I do support this proposal, because Senator Courtney was there at the beginning. He's been there all along. He's here at the end, and it's, I'm proud to vote yes for him.
Great. Thank you very much. Other comments? All right. We have a motion on the floor to, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolutions. Am I on the wrong?
The consent calendar.
Thank you. The consent calendar. Thank you very much. So the motion is to adopt the consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. We have no one, no issue signed up for public hearing this evening. We do have special orders of business. We're going to be voting for the planning commission appointment. And I just will, let's see, do we want to wait a moment and have a little?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to take a very brief stretch break, right? Okay.
Mayor Peterson, I just wanted to make sure that the record showed that I was here at about 20 minutes after.
That's true.
Seven.
...for the Monday of December 15th, 2014. And we left off just at the very beginning of special orders of business. And what we're going to do this evening under special orders of business is to vote on the planning commission appointments. And I believe that Counselor Bennett may have distributed ballots to everyone. And our recommended action, I'm sorry, does everybody have one?
I'm sure you have one.
All right. You've already got.
Yeah, we rearranged them.
Oh, you did? All right. And so we're appointing one applicant to fill one member vacancy. It's a four-year term. It expires on 2017. So if everyone would please mark your ballot for one person, and you have to sign your ballot, and those are going to be picked up and tabulated by our city attorney. And while that's being done, while the tabulation is being done, I will, I would like to draw your attention to the information report that's in the binder at 7A, and it has to do with accomplishments from 2008 to 2014. And I'm going to ask our city manager, Lyndon Norris, to introduce the information report and talk about it. And then at the end of that, we'll go back to the balloting issue and see if we have a decision.
Thank you, Mayor. And there may be counselors who want to talk about some of your, the projects that have meant the most to you. But we thought that with this city council, with four of the members leaving, that it would be an important time just to pause for a minute and think about all of the amazing accomplishments that have happened. And of course, some of these projects are long-term, and the one we just finished talking about was 40 years in the making. So it's hard to know exactly when to start and when to end, but we thought it was important to go from 2008 to 2014, because some of you have been here that long or longer. And of course, again, it's through the work of many counselors, many mayors, many people from the community. But we listed these in the council goal order of public safety, livable community, parks and recreation, transportation connectivity, affordable housing, economic development, general fund budget stability, and asset management. And as you can see, there are several pages of kind of small font of all of the many projects that have been accomplished or made significant progress on during this time from 2008 to 2014. We would like to, and there may be ones that you'd like us to add to this, but would like to have kind of a four... to add to this, but would like to have kind of a four-page, small document to have on January 29th at the celebration of the council's leaving, to really have that available to the public and to note how many things are going on in this community. And I don't know if there are ones, or maybe you want to finish the ballot first, Mayor?
No, I think we'll go ahead and talk about this right now. You bet. Okay, are there any comments from counselors? I was pretty impressed with the whole list. I thought that was a great way to let the public know just how many projects have been actually worked on and completed. So let's see, Counselor Clem had his hand up. Counselor Rogers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I want to say thank you to city manager and staff and Casey Duncan for, and all the folks who participated. It's quite an exhaustive list. The longer I think about it, the more little things I can add. But I'm just very, very proud of not only the last eight years, but even longer, because this council never really sort, this council may never complete projects it starts.
That's right.
You know, the earlier naming of the bridge was really something started in 1975. And in terms of urban renewal, a number of projects had been well-launched before 2008. The Robert Lindsey Towers and so forth. But those were not commercially viable projects. Those were projects that have helped the community. But in fact, since 2008, the whole Broadway Commons projects, that was, there were homes there, but things were not in good condition. It was a blighted neighborhood. And really, in the last eight years, that has just really blossomed into a perfect example of urban renewal. So when I think of what we've done in the last eight years or 12 years, it really is an effect of urban renewal working for both housing and for commercial developments as well as others. Water treatment is a complete different thing than it was 12 years ago. A lot of cleaner streams, but the new wastewater treatment plant, $300 million. Hopefully, we're putting back into the river clean water that's not warm. One of the items I'm particularly pleased with is the Environmental Action Plan. This was a response to sustainability and helping with environmental issues. But really, it got to the point of all aspects of how the city operates, and the city being a model for businesses and other governments to emulate. With the Environmental Action Plan, we've reduced waste. We've reduced energy consumption. We've engaged employees on an active basis at where they work in helping us to trim costs, but reduce our carbon footprint, our environmental pollution. And so, I think, once that gets updated next year, I think we'll continue to see trends. 6.3% reduction in Part I crimes.
Yeah.
We all campaigned that we're gonna reduce crime. Once in a while, it's kind of nice to see that you actually did. And it really had nothing to do with, so much with council or the budget committee. It has everything to do with community policing. We have the finest police force in Oregon because our chief, all the way down to the newest officer, understands that you get more done by helping people and preventing problems than, and by, community policing isn't even the right word anymore. It's community partnerships that really keep us from having some of the problems that other communities are having. So I would urge that the city continue to do that. But really, where I live, people keep moving there. But we're doing, we're responding to it. And we're trying to keep up the best we can with a brand-new Wallace-Glen Creek intersection, improved flow of traffic onto the bridge and onto Front Street, both directions. Those were projects, more sidewalks, traffic medians, crossings, more and more on Wallace, on Glen Creek, on Taven Road. The crossings in front of the schools have been particularly effective. Chapman Hills on Doakes Ferry. And then the revitalization of the Edgewater District with the Second Street project. Hopefully, this council will continue with the Second Street project, take it under Wallace, and have it come up to Wallace Marine Park so that we can build continuity across Wallace. Wallace does not need to be a solid line that people can't get across. We've improved Wallace-Glen Creek intersection, walked it the other morning. It's a lot safer. It's a lot quicker to get across. And so, folks, get on down to the river, cross Wallace, but in fact, do so safely. And we continue to improve Second Street. Lot more work to do down there, no doubt about it, but these things take 10 years. So I'm very pleased with, as in finally saying, in eight years, we've built seven new parks, improved a whole lot of others. And we said we were gonna go for jobs. We gotta have new jobs. Well, Mill Creek, we've gotten hundreds of new jobs and the promise of even thousands more. So I'm not saying we delivered on our promises, but we sure tried really hard. And so, I think this accomplishment list can be added to by other counselors, and I'll certainly stop now. But I'm very proud of what the citizens have allowed us to do with the streets and bridges bond measure and supporting the fire bond measure. You trusted us, and hopefully, we've delivered. And it's been a privilege to do that. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, one thing that I think is a great piece that we've had the whole time I've been on council for four years, and I know it was before, as well as the ability of council to stay at the policy level and be able to live at that level and be able to make the decisions that allow staff to move forward effectively and efficiently to make these things happen. Because everything that Counselor Clem just mentioned is so great, and it's just driven by staff. And I appreciate and I commend everybody who's on council now for staying at that level so that it can happen by the people who know how best to do it. One of the things that was started when I first came on and finished, a couple of years after I came on, was the UDC, the Unified Development Code Revision. That was a really big deal for Salem. And it is a big deal going on. It's one of those way-under-the-waters things that most people don't ever see. But for the people who do see it, the businesses who are thinking about relocating and building here, for the people who have something, a building that they need to expand or change their use for or do anything along those lines, it's much clearer now. It is way better. And I think that shows a commitment to the community as a whole, not just to the flashy projects that Salem has going. So I appreciate that. And again, appreciate that we're gonna move Kubler forward because that's a big deal for us. So anyway, good things on this list. I appreciate this from staff. I had a good time reading it through and actually sent it to a couple of family members. Because a lot of times, they ask, well, what do you do on city council? And I say, a lot of little things that add up to a big hole. And I don't, where do you start? You know, it's hard. It's not like you get these big flashy things. So anyway, it's neat. I appreciate this, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Oh, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. The one thing I didn't see on this list when I took a look at it was chickens. And I think, I'll tell you why.
I don't know how we missed that.
I don't know. Goats are on here. Goats are here. Chickens are not.
Oh, discriminated against chickens.
I think it's significant, not so much because we all just love chickens. I mean, I know we have a couple of counselors who do love their chickens very much. And I know it was not a 100% vote when we voted for it. But it really was something that the public said, hey, we've got an interest in this. It was kind of the how a bill becomes a law. Let's bring the idea to council. And it's significant because we spent many, many, many hours working on the issue. But I think, you know, it was a lot of public engagement, and it was, you know, public coming down and saying, hey, here's an idea, and kind of working through the process. And, you know, we could apply that to a lot of other things on here, not something as lighthearted as chickens. But there are other issues on here where someone said, I mean, it's not like we went out looking for all of these things. Some of these, we knew had to be updated. Others, you know, it was someone from the public said, you know, hey, I'm trying to do X, and I've run into this issue. And so, we've realized we have something to address, and we addressed it. But chickens was the one that jumped out at me because it's not on here. But I think, you know, that's the one thing, you know, we're very open to the public here. You know, we love having the public come down and engage with us. And so, I think that's just an example of our willingness to do that. And the reason why, we've gotten so many things accomplished over the last six years.
I think so. It's a good point. Other comments? I'd like to note a couple of things. When I read through it, I really would like to be sure that we maybe write a little bit more about our IT facility and how really progressive it has become under the leadership of Krishna.
Nimbury.
Nimbury, thank you. And her leadership and the staff there, we really are moving ahead, not just with, you know, social media and some of those computer-type things. But I know that the vision, now that I've had a chance to really get to know her and hear her presentation about IT, how it really is the foundation under the entire city. And it's easy to forget that. And so, I'd like to see that a little more described in here. And I'm also mindful of the tremendous number of community gardens that our city helps actually happen, either through allowing use of some leftover space that was in a right-of-way, or helping a neighborhood by getting some water into a park area for gardens. And I think that's really been especially important as we're thinking about better nutrition and also as way, another way to help feed people who don't have as much food as they need. So I think the gardens are real important. I'd like to take a minute because I know if I wait till the end of the meeting, everybody's gonna get, jump up and leave the room. So some of you are leaving. Four of you are gonna be leaving. And it's truly been my pleasure to serve for four years now, two terms for me. But I want to say thank you to this team. When I came on, my number-one project was team building. And I appreciated so much how much Linda Norris really grabbed the idea. And we did bring Dave Fronmeyer in for team building. But you're the ones that made it happen. And it's been such a pleasure for me to work with every one of you and to feel like every time we had a meeting, you all just came into the room and sort of put on the yoke. And I'm gonna try to say this without crying. And we've all pulled this load together. And I just feel like it's so remarkable as, you know, things wax and wane, and we've struggled with budget, and some of us have gone through, you know, campaigns while we're here. Nobody ever brought that in on the council floor, and I appreciated that so much. But I really appreciated the way you're all so devoted to the city, to the people. And it's just been such a pleasure to work with you all. And it's gonna be very hard for me to see those of you who are leaving, leave. I'm excited about the new council, but this was special. This was magic, I think. We did become known as the collaborative and consensus-seeking council. And I think that's a remarkable accomplishment in a period of time when maybe out in the political realm, that's not always the norm. So I want to say thank you to every one of you for that. Thank you. Okay, do we have, probably have an election that we, oh, we have a hand up. Oh, Counselor Teszler, how many times did I not see your hand in here?
You know, I was really tempted to get one of those big foam hands like this and just bring it in here and put it on a stick.
I was really tempted to buy you one.
I'll get a picture of it for next meeting.
Yeah, big foam hand. So, no, I just, I wanted to say, this is a great list, but there's a few things that are left off it, including the sewer replacement at my house. No, but it's my fault, right? It's my problem. So here's the situation, is that, you know, we have five, well, six if you count the cidery, but we have craft microbrewing happening in Salem. And the Salem Brewing Association, which has kind of been lapsed since the 50s, they're gonna start that up again. And I think that is really important to note because there is no reason why Salem cannot have craft brewing community, just like every other city does. It has been my distinct pleasure to watch two of these organizations and Wandering Angus kind of start from the back of somebody's house, and I'm suddenly get out of the trunk of my car, and now they're a fully functioning operation. And I do think one of, you know, can't think now, what's the one over by the creek that we like? Yes.
Get the miss.
That one is gonna be, they're bottling already. San Am's gonna start bottling pretty soon. And this is the big, it's the next Ninkasi is basically what's gonna happen. And these are small businesses and mid-sized businesses that extremely benefit our community. They hire a lot of people. They will hire a lot of people. And, you know, we should put that on this list of accomplishments because that's something that makes our community interesting and vibrant and draws people in. And, you know, you should see the people who flock to a kind of weird industrial area to go to San Am, okay? It's crowded there. Parks and Recreation looks, you know, did a lot of stuff. One thing that you should talk about is Garan Island. That screen was very, very, very expensive. You did not have to put that level of screening in there. You went well above NOAA's requirements to divert juvenile salmonids. And that is a really good thing that you should talk about because that screen does efficiently divert juveniles from the intake. And that is cool. I mean, that's a good thing, especially in the North San Am, which has a very, very good run of fish, steelhead especially. So you should pat yourself on the back for that. We really encouraged people not to use so much water in the summer from the old tuna can campaign.
Yes.
And, you know, people listened, you know? And I saw a lot of dead lons in the summer, yay, and empty tuna cans. And, you know, we did that. We got people to become aware that, you know, we can, we can do that. These improved fish ladders, that's great. That's sensational stuff. I think probably my last fond memory was preying upon everyone that had a street vacation in this council chamber for years to finance LaFell, remember?
Yes.
That took years of, every person who had a street vacation, I was like, can I have the money? And some of it was $5,000. And so, we finally put together what we needed to pave LaFell through street vacations. It took years to do that. But yeah, so this is a good list. Looks good.
Yeah, it's very efficient.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. We'll add all of those things people have worked.
I'd like to make a note of, one of the goals that we set earlier on with council was that we would become more culturally and ethnically diverse on our boards and commissions. And I think that we've really begun. It's never over, but I think we've made a really good, good progress in doing that. Okay, shall we move ahead and find out who the new member of the planning commission is going to be? Do we have a report from our city attorney?
Joshleen Pollack won the vote with six votes.
All right, all right. Well, we will, I assume someone will let her know in case she's not watching live at this moment. Excellent. Thank you all. Thank you to all of those applicants. We appreciate so much when people do put their hat in the ring for boards and commissions, and especially in one where you do need to be interviewed and to take that extra step of being interviewed and submitting oneself for election to the planning commission. Thank you to every one of the people that was on the ballot. And we congratulate Josh Pollack. Look forward to having her join the commission. So, all right. Following that, let's see what's left on our agenda. Not too much tonight. We have, let's see. Looks like we have first reading of an ordinance, 8.1. Would the city recorder please introduce that for us?
Ordinance Bill Number 29-14, an ordinance relating to mobile food units, amending Salem Revise Code, Section 30.405 and 30.410.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I'll just move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Is there any explanation that's needed regarding this first reading on the mobile food units? All right, apparently not. All right. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no second readings. Does anyone sign up for public comment in this section of the meeting? We have one person, Richard Sayers. Did I say yes? Good evening. Thank you for being have one person, Richard Sayers. Did I say yes? Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight.
Richard Swires, College Drive Northwest, and also representing Aspie at 1400 10 Way Northeast. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank you all for all the time you sacrifice here and your families' sacrifice. We're going to miss some of you that I've been here till midnight on meetings and been on projects with and fundraisers and street bond collecting. And hope to still be here with some of you that are sticking around and staying. But we thank you all for all the time you have served. There's nothing more. I've seen many valuable things happen sitting here at council. And we want to thank you. This is City of Salem, Aspie local, wants to thank you. And our doors are always open to you. And come visit us if you have something that needs help on. Other than that, I also want to wish you all a happy holiday and a safe one. And I also let you know that the State of Oregon, Aspie, will be in this town April 2015 for a convention. So there'll be delegates from all over the state representing 24 and a half thousand people that are members here. And we also decided to do it for 2017. So you're getting us for the next two conventions here.
That's great.
So thank you, everybody, and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your comments. All right, there's no further business to come before our council, and we are adjourned.